Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Kurth, thank you.
Please rise, but we only have an invocation by Commissioner Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Kurth.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day and for the opportunity to come together and try to make decisions that are in the best interest of our city. Please guide us with your wisdom, hold us with your justice, comfort us with your mercy, and protect us with your power. Pray for these things in your most holy name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from our September 10, 2014 meeting.
Move to approve those minutes?
With one correction to change the time from five, or from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM for this evening.
I move to approve with that correction.
Second.
Okay, if you wish to speak to us in regards to anything before us this evening, would you please fill out a white card and bring it up front so that we can have your information? I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and open public hearing on item number one.
On item number one, I'm going to recuse myself because I have family that work for the districts.
Agenda item number one is PLN 14-00020. It is a site plan and conditional use permit to allow for the development of an elementary school within a residential zone. This is located west of Arrowhead Drive, south of Warwick Street, east of the logistical extension of Cypress Avenue and north of Elkin Street. Victor Elementary School District is requesting this approval for a K-6 school located on a 10-acre site. The project meets all development standards excepting for a flagpole height. The current R1 designation only allows a 20-foot flagpole per residential lot. Since the size of this site is close to 10 acres, staff recommends that the planning commission make the deviation findings to allow that flagpole. With that, staff supports the project as conditioned. Over here, if you have any questions, the applicant's also available today as well.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item or open the public hearing? Please go. And if we could get a little white card from you even after the fact and bring it... Oh, okay. You can fill it out after and put it in. That's fine. You can state your name though for the record.
Hi, my name is Lori Campbell, and I live on Arroyo Drive, Victorville, near Warwick, and the school's going to be built. I had some concerns.
Okay.
And one of them was, this happened, I guess, a while back, maybe about three or four years ago, this came up before, and then I came to the hearing, but I don't know, and then it's like stopped. I don't know because it was the economy or anything, but I just had a concern about like where I am, I'm on Arroyo, and by that being such a tight street, you know, are they going to have like a bus pickup or people going to be just parking in your driveways or anyway, just like how they do at normal, you know, schools? Because I've seen where people just park, you can't get in your home because they're just parking any kind of way. And also, me personally, I just feel like we should have a bus, except for the ones that walk.
Yeah, I can address that. The applicant accommodates for on-street, I'm sorry, on-site parking, off-street parking, and apparent pickup lane, all on-site. You can see on the site plan behind me. They've also dedicated additional right-of-way along Warwick Street to allow additional stacking in the event that the stacking or parking spills over onto Warwick Street. But based on the current layout, if there was backup, it would only be on Warwick Street and heading onto Cypress, all of which fronts the school site.
Are you saying Cypress is where, because Cypress has the water DWP type of thing, where, you know, and they have that fill out there? Are you guys going to be utilizing that part as well or just Warwick to Cypress?
It would be the east side of Cypress. They're developed, they will develop that portion of Cypress of their site. As you can see here, it would be adjacent to their ball field if there was any additional stacking.
And looking at the, what they have proposed, they have 111 off-street parking spots available, plus a designated parent drop-off lane and a bus pickup. So it looks like they've addressed all those trying to prevent, you know, kid safety in mind. So I think they've looked at trying to provide adequate parking to help prevent those situations from happening. Can we say it won't happen? No, but I think they're looking at trying to alleviate the majority of the problem.
Because I've seen, you know, parents and now with the economy the way it is and people, I understand, you know, picking your children up and everything, but, oh, thank you, I'll take this. I just want to make sure that, and also that it doesn't bring any, like, problems because we have a nice little area over there where it's no ventilators or something like that. So I went like, we have like, you know, like, what do you call it, like a block club, some type of thing, those you watch and make sure people are not like breaking in your homes because we go to work during the day, you know what I'm saying? And you got all these cars, you just want to make sure.
Well, it looks like this would be the elementary school that would probably be servicing your area, so it would probably be a benefit.
Okay. And that was my concern, you know, as far as the parking and...
Oh, no problem.
...picking up the kids and stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, and you want me to give this card to her?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you want me to write down? I wrote it, kind of wrote it all on here.
Yeah, you can give her.
If I can just give it to her.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? Please come forward. And then if, when you're done, if we could get a white card from you, great. Your name, please?
My name is Coria Scott. I live on Elkin Street. It's the house, like, right closer to Arrowhead, the gate that's going to be, the school's going to be right on the other side of my backyard. So I just wanted to know, did it, will it affect property value for my home with the school being there?
Say one way or the other, but it shows.
We can't really say, what I can say is that the school district is providing a seven-foot-high block wall along the backs of your property. So where you have currently worded fence, that would be replaced with a block wall to help buffer the use. But the school plans on operating during normal school hours. We don't foresee any issues to the surrounding properties.
And also, what is it? My grandma sent me with questions. We live in the house right there. What year would the school be opening?
Don't know.
You guys don't know?
I don't have a definite answer. The applicant is here, and he'll probably approach and give you some more information.
Okay.
Okay, and does, so you guys don't know anything about what would be going on with the properties on the other side? No? Okay, because I know they wasn't part of the city yet, and I don't know if the school will make those part of the city now. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt Resolution P-14-055 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN 14-00020, and adopt Resolution P-14-056 approving the conditional use portion of that case, and find that the project was previously assessed by the Victor Elementary School District regarding the environmental assessment, along with all conditions found in the staff report.
Second.
That has passed.
With Commissioner Smith abstaining and Chair Porter absent.
All right, agenda item number two.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Item number two is planning case PLN 14-00021. It is a site plan to allow for the construction of an approximate 7,500-square-foot retail building with an environmental exemption. This is located on the northwest corner of Palmdale Road and Delgado Road. O'Reilly Automotive Stores is proposing this new store at this location on a 0.8-acre parcel. The proposal is a permitted use within the underlying C2 district. It meets all development code requirements excepting for the requested pole sign of 24 feet. The current code would restrict that to six feet. Planning commission, the planning staff has included a resolution approving the project with conditions that would limit it to a six-foot-high monument sign. With that, staff supports the overall project, and we're available if you have any questions.
Very good. I'll go ahead and open up agenda item number two for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close agenda item number two. Back to the commission.
Yes, I'll find the project categorically exempt, adopt Resolution Number P-14-057 approving site plan case number PLN 14-00021, subject to the attached conditions of approval without the requested 24-foot freestanding sign.
Second. Oh, second. That has been approved. All right, I'll go ahead and open up agenda item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Item number three is PLN 14-23, and it is located at 12160 Mariposa Road. It is the new Steak 'n Shake restaurant, and they are requesting a conditional use permit to allow for wall murals. The murals are located on the back, about one-third portion of the building. They face the freeway on-ramp and freeway, and the murals are proposed in a 1950s kind of era fashion. I guess Steak 'n Shake has been around for a lot of years, and these pictures, like photographs, will be placed on the back third of the building. But that, as noted in the workshop, a lot of the items that you're reviewing a mural on are subjective, and then you also have the one that shall not serve as signage. So that also might be a subjective definition. So with that, staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Just go forward. I appreciate that, thank you.
My name is, I'm sorry, my name is Brandon Gilbert. I'm vice president of operations for AMI Development. We're the ones that own the Steak 'n Shake. I made copies to show you some of the old Steak 'n Shakes that we make now that shows the graphics for you, and I blew them up on a board here for you too, so you can actually see what it looks like. Is that okay to hand them over to you?
How far do these murals or signs stick up in the building?
They're, look like they're about six feet high. You still have about under four feet from the top of it to where they were out from the building.
Protecting, protecting away from the building.
Oh, from the building? It's just on a half-inch, like, it's not a foam board, I think it's more of a chalkboard type thing that is screwed right into the cement. Doesn't stick out far at all. Like putting a wood panel on, like a half-inch plywood, three-quarter inch plywood, but it's on a more of a white chalkboard than I've seen before.
Okay.
I have a somewhat con...
Any other questions?
No, I just think you're, it's so close to advertising that you got steak written on one of the, on one of the boards. It's so close to advertising that I think we're going to end up with a problem with other businesses coming in. I have a mural on my building. It'd be easy for me to put a glass truck running around the building for more advertising. So this to me is so close to advertising that I can't support it totally. I mean, if it had other things on it besides anything to do with the restaurant, I could support it more, but it is, to me, it's just totally advertising.
One of the items that I'm noticing different between what I have in a graphic here and what we've got in the graphic here is on this very first panel, be this, this one right here, that it's kind of the wraparound of the front of the building. On...
On the side of the building.
On the side, I'm sorry, on the side of the building. But on the proposed, it looks like the elevation is lower, and there's a good portion of your logo hanging off the front of this particular panel, but on here, it's not present. So I don't know if it would be similar to this or what we've got here, which I think is part of Larry's concern.
I think it'd be whatever they had on there. I thought there was supposed to be somebody here for this, but I just wanted to show you a picture of it.
No, and I...
Of what, that's a different steak, that's out of Missouri, but the new Steak 'n Shake that we've been doing for about the last five years?
Mm-hmm.
All of them have those graphics on the buildings. There might be different ones, a little bit different of the picture of one from, like what they show the kids in the car there getting their shakes from the, we did it on roller skates at one time doing it.
Yeah, I see, and I get that. I can appreciate what you're doing for it. But Larry, did you see that kind of difference on the picture here versus what we have in the graphic? That some of that would maybe be more acceptable?
Yeah, it just, like I say, it just, the lights, just have a hard time.
You're talking about the first one that says steak on it up at the top there?
Correct, yes.
I'm sure we could get a different one, because we have different ones on other stores. I think they just did that, that's why I did it on here, because when I looked at that, it was kind of hard to see, and I didn't know if you'd be able to see it, and eight and a half by 11, so I took some pictures and blew them up just so you can see what it looks like on the building that we look at as part of our culture, what we've had before. But I can absolutely see about getting something else with no wording on it whatsoever, just showing the older people, like with the, you know, with the hats and stuff like that, and the kids and stuff like that.
Might just lift in the mic up a little bit there?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure she can get it.
Sure.
If we were to move forward, would you have, would we just need to see a revised graphic of what they're proposing, or could we approve it and then just do it with the zoning administrator's approval?
Yeah, you could do that, definitely.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm just here to stand.
Oh, you're just here to stand? I see what you guys are saying. I like the way this ties in, you know, to the whole concept. To me, it's more architectural than signage, but, you know, you made a good point. It says Steak Burgers right in the architecture, which we already have that in the signs, Steak 'n Shake, Steak Burgers. So I think if you were the client, would be amenable. I too think so that we don't set a precedent down the road when we're looking at future murals, signs, you know, architectural styles with pictures, whatever it may be. If we could just get the words, you know, off of there, so it's looked less as advertising and more of architecture to the building? Is that something that would be doable?
I'd have no problem at all doing that. I'll go back to our people, because we have hundreds of photos, and then we can have the sign company that does our graphics for us do that, and we just want to have the stuff on there, like the little girl on there that you show with the law, you know? We can take the wording out of that, so it won't show Steak Burgers or anything. That would not be a problem.
Okay.
I'm okay with it, other than that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we don't set a precedent here, and everybody in town's going to put a mural up. So I, I'll support that, to take the steaks off of the sign, one.
I'll go ahead, and if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring it back to the commission.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to find the project category exempt under section 15301 of the state guidelines to implement the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt Resolution Number P-14-058 approving conditional use permit case number PLN 14-00023, subject to detached conditions of approval, and subject to the approval of the zoning administrator? Is that what I...
For the removal of all...
For the removal of all words or advertising in the murals.
They've got them labeled as numbers one through four on their graphic.
Gotcha.
I'll go ahead and second that.
That item has...
It has been approved, thank you.
With Chair Porter absent.
All right, agenda item number four was a previously continued item that we received notification on today that the applicant has withdrawn their application.
This would be, I would just, this is PLN 14-18, for anyone in the audience who may have been noticed for it. Title Max was the appellant, and the, this issue has been settled, and the applicant has withdrawn their application.
And move on to agenda item number five.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is DEV 14-4, various amendments to Title 16, including the land use table, variances, sound barrier for residential uses along highways 18 and 395, residential wall height, and the regulation of synthetic drugs. As I mentioned in the workshop, these, most of these items, excepting the synthetic drugs, they were on a previous code amendment before the commission when the Building Industry Association requested to meet with us. We did that, and we've taken care of that issue, and we have a letter of support from them. And then also, we added a synthetic... And then also we added a synthetic drug ordinance to allow the sheriff's department to better enforce the way they have to deal, the way they can deal with those manufactured drugs. So with that, staff supports and recommends your approval to the commission, to the council.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number five. I have two cards, and if anyone else wishes to speak, please fill out a card. The first one is Yasenia, and I don't want to destroy the last name. I apologize.
Hello, my name is Yasenia Carbajal.
Okay.
I live in Hisparia and I have two teenager children and two younger children. I have learned a lot about synthetic drugs through my involvement with the High Desert Community Coalition. I firmly believe in the planning commission and eventually the city councillor must act if we hope to get rid of this poison in his, excuse me, in Victorville. Synthetic drugs are dangerous. Even my children know that. These dangerous drugs are still available in Victorville. State and federal laws have failed to keep up with the manufacturers and retailers who profit by selling their toxic wares to our children. The health risk and the, and the death caused by these toxic chemicals are well known. And each time I read about an injury, death caused by someone who uses synthetic drugs, I find myself asking how many more children have to suffer or die? That's why I am encouraging you to approve an ordinance that will allow sheriff deputies to, to get rid of spice, K2, or whatever the next generation of synthetic drugs will be called off the shelves and off the stores in Victorville. We believe in the ordinance that is enforced and one that will be prosecuted. For the sake of our children, I am asking to, I'm asking you to support this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Michael Grabhorn? Sorry if I messed that up.
Mike Riding, that's not the name. I'm Mike Grabhorn. And I'm a member of the High Desert Community Coalition, which we have been working on the synthetic drugs ordinance for the past three years. We have recently, the county supervisors have passed that ordinance, as you know, as a county ordinance. We've also been working with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. And I imagine Captain Lucia has already talked to each one of you. And if I'm redundant on what I'm saying, I apologize. I just want to be sure you kind of get the gist of this whole thing. The synthetic drugs are drugs that are manufactured anywhere from garages, you know, kind of like the methamphetamine kind of thing. But the problem with the synthetic drugs is they are sold as window cleaner, potpourri, all these kind of odd things. And the reason is they put on there not for human consumption. When they do that, that means the FDA will never check that product to see what chemicals are in there. It also means that those chemicals are available for sale to anyone. Okay? In other words, a 12-year-old child can go into an AMPM or a liquor store theoretically and, and purchase this. There have been deaths that have been associated with the use of spice and the basalts. And because of the different chemical changes, we can't keep up with it. The state and federal laws are laws against certain chemicals. Well, if you're, if you're a chemist or know anything about chemicals, you just change the chemical. Still does the same thing, but you move this over here. So it's impossible to keep up with. The ordinance that the sheriff's department has put together covers all that. We can take care of all that. We have seven cities in the county of San Bernardino that have already passed ordinances. Barstow and Adelanto are two of them. We had a person go and try and do undercover buys in Barstow. They were told, we can't sell them, but you can go to Victorville. Within the past month, we had someone trying to do undercover buys in Victorville and found stores still in Victorville selling the spice and basalts. So we would ask you to join with the sheriff's department and with the county supervisors in passing this ordinance up to the city council so that we can take care of that in Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Oh, you know what? Not just on that issue, but there's, this is this is the various amendments, right? Covering a number of things besides the-
There's two resolutions, one for the various, the first one, and then the synthetic drugs is its own reso.
Okay. Well, if we cover it all at once, I did have a couple of questions on, on the other portions of it. On under the municipal code change when it comes to the social services, I'm under the impression that those are to be looked at more as like government, straight up government office. Is that the intent?
Correct.
And then I can't remember, is that, is that broken out or outlined in the land use table? Showing that it would be a conditional type use?
Yes.
I looked through, I didn't see it. I probably missed it. For the, for like, the, like if a, if a business and office use is considered a, a social service, and then that is to be looked at as a gov, as a government office? Where, where in the municipal code of the land use table does it say that the government office requires a CUP and ties those two together?
I think I can handle, the government, government uses are, are more strictly regulated in the commercial districts. So what this definition does is tie social service to a government use. So where it's not permitted in the municipal land use district, or if it's conditionally permitted, meaning a government office, the social service use would fall under that government use. Currently in C2, a government use is, is not allowed. CA, it's conditionally permitted. And C1, I believe it's conditionally permitted.
Okay, and is that in the land use table? Is that, is that government building? Is that what I'm looking at?
Correct.
Under public government building?
Correct. That's, that's currently the only area in our land use table that discusses government uses.
I'm just, I think what I was getting at is, is just if we're going to tie those together, I think in the future there may be confusion with businesses coming to Victorville that say, hey, I'm, I'm just a straight up office use. They look at the land use table, they say, I'm not a government use. Then they come to the counter and say, oh, sorry, you are actually considered a government use. Is there something that we could clarify a little more?
Maybe it'd be cleaner to put government office instead of building? Or government office separately, right below government building?
You could make a motion to include a government use, which is the same-
But would the, would the, the person coming to Victorville to open a business, I just went through one, you know, recently that was funded by the county of San Bernardino. That would be lumped into this social service category. And how would they know that they're a government office, government building, government use when they're not? But the city is categorizing them as so. And they wouldn't know that till after they got in pretty deep. Because if they went and looked at the land use, they may say, we're an office, we're not a government office, we get to move forward. They ask for their business license and say, no, you guys can't be there. You're considered a government office. How would they know that, I think is the question?
We could add, under professional offices, we could add excluding government and social service uses listed right there. So when they look at a professional office use, if they realize they're government or social services, which are one and the same, they, they would be flagged to, to call the city and ask more questions.
Yeah, I think that, I think something like that might, might help. The confusion, just being in the industry, I would, I would foresee that as happening. And the only other thing I had was, within the resolution, there was a, just a typo on page. 125 at the bottom where the word drug was misspelled in the resolution. That's it. For the synthetic part.
Anything else?
Okay, then I'll, I'll make the motion since I brought up that other, that other issue. I recommend that the city council find the code amendment exempt pursuant to section 15061B3 of SEQA and adopt resolution P-14-049 recommending city council approval of case development 140004 with a modification to identify social service uses, to be identified a little bit clearer within the land use table so that there is no confusion as to being an office or considered a government office. And I'll make a motion to adopt resolution P-14-054 recommending the city council approve case number DEV 14-00004 regarding the synthetic drugs code amendment.
Go ahead and second the motion. Just to clarify, that motion included the city attorney's revisions?
Oh, yes, including the city's attorney's revisions that we received today that are highlighted in, in red and supersede the ones previously in our package.
That has been approved.
Recommended to the city council with Chair Porter absent.
I'd like to thank the group that was here too for bringing this to our attention. It's a very, very important issue and we hope that it moves in better direction in Victorville. And the whole High Desert as a whole on this issue, very important. Thank you.
In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the planning commission to make available time for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. And it's an empty audience.
Oh.
Uh-oh. All right, presentation of reports by commission members.
Can I bring up something that was touched on in tonight's meeting? When Commissioner Huber brought up the, the fact on, is that signage, is that a mural? I'm glad he did because it made me think a little bit different. At first I was looking at those as, well, that definitely is a mural. That's definitely, you know, some kind of architecture. It looks like they're putting a lot of work to that. And I think it would enhance that building in that case. And I think that's why the planning commission's here to look at those. But with Commissioner Huber's comments and then with some of this material that, that we were given tonight with the definition of the signs, I was just wondering if maybe we would change that definition to to alleviate some of the confusion on, is it, is it a mural that is architecturally compatible to the building so the future commissions can jump to that? Because the way it states right here is, you know, it is, it is a device that is composed of pictorial matter. So it's very clear that that is a sign. I know that our intent tonight was not to go that direction. But is there a way that we could, we could take out, you know, pictorial matter or just change some language a little bit?
Better get a definition of a mural.
I don't think it's the pictorial matter that, that's just telling you that a sign can be pictorial matter. Because like Larry was saying, pictorial, a picture of rock on the side of his building isn't a sign. It's not advert, he doesn't sell rock. He doesn't, you know, he's not, so it's not, that's not, that wouldn't be a sign. It would be a picture.
If I would draw windows all over my building,
Exactly.
that would be advertising.
If, yes, if his mural was pictures of windows, all the types that he could sell inside, then it would all be signage, even other pictures. So it's, it's down at the bottom there when it's used to advertise or promote the interest of that business.
Well, it certainly is. Anything you put on your building that's gaining attention and attraction to your building, which ultimately is attention and attraction to the products and services that you're trying to get money for, you know, that, that does, you're right, Chris, that does kind of fall in to all of that. But I think the intent with the commission, and I don't want to squash murals, we saw the one over at Dunya Plaza that was coming, the BJ's Pub. They had some pretty neat murals. I think it was a wheat field, it was something else. Yeah, it had to do with beer, I suppose. But I thought it looked pretty neat and modern and they were putting a lot of money towards that. And, and just like this, it looked neat. Yes, it did show what the business is kind of about. You know, but so does the architecture of the building. When the thing swoops down, it screams 1950s. And that's what they are, is a 50s burger joint. So where do we draw the line? And I think the commission should have the justification to say, hey, this is of quality material, it's well lit, it looks good in that neighborhood versus like what you said, Larry, I sell XYZ, so I'm going to paint XYZ on the side of my building. That would be a little different for this commission, I think.
You're going to see a lot of this come in now. This is approved, you're going to see a lot of this that's going to be real close to their business.
Couldn't we, if it's architecturally compatible? We have been seeing it, and Rob's right. In shape wanted, In Shape Fitness wanted to put big murals or posters of, of people working out or something on their wall. Tilted Kiltz is looking at doing a similar one to what you're talking about with BJ's and like, and you're right, they're nice. They might be related to the business. You could argue that they are, they aren't, that they are trying to get attention. But, you know, a mural that just says welcome to Victorville or something could gain your attention too and, and have something historic on it. And that's, it was tough. And that's what I was saying with planning, we were kind of split. Because when you go through those compatibility of the design with the immediate environment, appropriateness of the design, appropriateness of the design as a public work of art, you know, those are subjective. So, I mean, I thought that it works pretty well on the building. It's facing the freeway. It's not, it's not in your face right on Mariposa Road and stuff. So my, my, in terms of me, I was thinking the compatibility and the design overall wasn't that bad. It was, it was pretty good. But then, yeah, then-
I made the wrong decision. I voted wrong.
Oh, you did?
Let me reopen that.
At least I got the signage off.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we're going to run into trouble down the line.
We may, and I think that's why I'm, I'm just asking staff or you guys, is there, do we need to work on this at all? Can anybody think of a reason to help us for the next one?
If we could definitely work up a policy or, or a code amendment in the future, if you want us, if we want to go more stricter or more looser or what, we need to, definitely, we would, it'll help, it'll help in the future to alleviate, like Larry's talking about, that-
Just lights on the mural is going to draw attention.
Does it look good in this case? I personally think it does, because I'd rather be in the drive-through with those kind of modern feel than just staring at the dirty stucco wall, which you're doing a drive-through. But in the next case, it might be different.
Well, it's, it's not in your face. It's not bright colors, bold sticking out. It's flush up against the wall muted black and white. I don't know. But I, I would say if it's architecturally compatible and goes with- That's, that's kind of tough. I'm not even sure what you're saying when you say architecturally compatible. Well, looking at, like the, the color pictures that they gave us to go along with their, it looks, it looks as part of the building. The diner's era. That era, it, it kind of goes. And the colors and the, yeah, okay.
There are sort of some more modern buildings in Vegas that have that kind of feel. And they are definitely not the rundown old building with a paint slapped mural on the side. The Getty Museum has some big panels with some old graphics on it. It's part of that museum. I don't see that as a, a big mural or big signs. It's almost part of the architecture of the building. And this falls for me somewhere kind of in between that.
Right.
And they're nonprofit. They really are not trying to promote-
Have you ever, have you ever tried to buy a Getty image? They're really expensive. I'm joking, Larry.
Commissioner Smith? Well, I'm sorry, do you have anything else?
Do we, do we need to work on it or are we safe just the way this is and we can leave it up to the commission?
Don't look at me. I mean, it's one of those things, it's going to be forever subjective. I mean, I mean, we could have, we could ask all four of us where the line's drawn and we could all put it in somewhere slightly different. and we could all put it in somewhere slightly different. I mean, I think that's kind of our purpose as being commissioners.
Then let's not beat it to death.
Look at it on a case-by-case basis, almost.
Everybody tries to cheat on signs, as we all know. Everybody tries to have more signing.
On everything.
Are you looking at me?
Everybody.
Architecture, colors- Good at me when you say that. Metal.
Metal on the wall.
Oh, yeah. Anything else, Larry?
No.
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you. So we will adjourn this meeting to, let me put my eyeballs back on, was it November? From what date? November 12th at 5:00 PM. 5:00 PM. Let's see if I got a text yet. No.